adequate notice for this meeting has been mailed to Asbury Park Press, filed with the municipal clerk of Keansburg, posted on the district website, and posted inside the office of the Keansburg Board of Education, 100th Commonwealth Place, Keansburg, New Jersey, on January 11th. Roll call?
Mrs. Clayton?
Yeah.
Mrs. Fidel?
Here.
Mr. Callahan Ryan?
Here.
Mr. McCaskey?
Here.
Mr. Kitchen?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Hoff?
Here.
Ms. Ferrar?
Yeah.
Ms. Ryan?
Here.
Please stand by. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the rule of law and justice for all. Ladies and gentlemen, again, we're waiting for some VIPs. We are gonna skip around a little bit, so please bear with us. We're gonna do the student reports. We're gonna start with the middle school, Boulder School. Uh, we have, this is Lupe Fosse and Jaden Jessica Black.
For our long spring break, everyone was anxious to start the last two months of the school year. Students want to finish the year strong.
For the week of May 5th, the Boulder students are getting ready for the NJSLA state testing.
Boulder's baseball and softball teams are now in full swing with this year's season. With so many rainy days, many of our games had to be rescheduled, and most of them will be held in May.
The gaming club continues to be an enthusiastic group of students who are making this new club a big success.
The sixth grade gifted untalented students had a class trip to the Bueller Space Challenger Center, where there were many hands-on space activities, where they worked in groups and, and learned about space science and technology.
On April 1st, our Boulder Middle School wished Ms. Pedro Roy a very happy retirement as she ended her 37 years in Keansburg's school district. We will all miss them.
Bring Your Child's Work Day on April 11th was a huge success. All the teachers' children had such a fun day, along with a variety of activities that the teachers and counselors had prepared for. They took part in games, interviewers contests, and of course, gathered for pizza at lunchtime.
The students in the eighth grade are looking forward to the two annual class trips. The first one will be on Tuesday, May 20th, to medieval times. They are so excited and cannot wait to go to the castle of lovers. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, I'm a reporter from the high school, Mr. Jayden.
Keansburg High School continues to be extremely busy. The National Honor Society is hosting a clothing drive from now until May 14th. All donations are going to support the Lucas Foundation and can be dropped off at the high school. Spring sports are in full swing. The softball team is working hard and improving with every game. Tennis got their first win of the season right before spring break against RBC. Baseball is having an incredible season with a 5-1 record right now, and is currently sitting in first place in the Coastal Division. Flag football is also doing well and beat SJV 19-14, all sorry before we went on break. The Keansburg High School yearbook is raffling off a $1,000 gift card. It is $10 per ticket. Feel free to contact Ms. Lopez if any questions. The Keansburg High School Gift, uh, Key Club had a very big one and received the honor of winning first place in the Single Service Award at the International Key Club Convention for our Rock On Walk in honor of our beloved teacher, Misty, who lost her battle to cancer. As the president of this club, I cannot be prouder of this accomplishment, especially as it was earned while remembering a teacher that personally inspired me. We will be walking again on May 23rd. All donations for participating in the walk go to the Misty Rock On Walk Scholarship, which goes to two deserving Titans each year. In our opinion, this is exactly how Misty would like to have been honored, by giving back to the students that she tirelessly devoted her life to. This coming Saturday, the Key Club is also hosting their major service party for this year. In partnership with the New Jersey Blood Service, we will be hosting our first ever blood drive from 9:00 to 1:30 a.m., uh, 9:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. in the high school cafeteria. Appointments are still available, but walk-ins are welcome. Please contact Ms. Lee with any questions. Come join us and give the gift of life. All who donate will also receive a box of Girl Scout cookies and a donor card with their blood type fund. Looking ahead, May is going to continue to be jam-packed. There's, there's meet preparations for the NJSLA starting on May 5th, the third marking period honor roll and perfect attendance breakfast, as well as a zero conduct points lunch on May 7th, and the junior senior prom on May 22nd. The year is sure to fly by. Thank you.
Any committee reports?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just one committee report. The, uh, financial meeting was held earlier this evening. Uh, I just wanna obviously say that tonight's, uh, presentation is on the yearly budget for the 25, 26th school year. Uh, Ms. Lindsay Case, our business administrator, will be handling the majority of the, uh, presentation, and, uh, for anybody that has questions, uh, please direct it to her. Thank you.
Alright, so we turn it over now. For some rewards to Mrs. Lee. So we're gonna take pictures?
Hi, my name is Ella Burkle. I'm Lieutenant Governor of Division 9 for the 2024, 2025, and I'm running again for 2026. Um, I would like to thank you guys so much for having me here. Um, it's truly an honor to be part of a gathering with such a passionate and self-driven inspiring individuals. Uh, Key Club represents everything that makes our community stronger with compassion, leadership, service, and commitment to making a difference. Your club exemplifies these qualities and goes above and beyond to make it known. I'm so incredibly proud of you, of you guys. The distinguished officer award recognizes achievement in service by an individual officer. It acknowledges the hard work and dedication that these officers do as they exemplify the four pillars of Key Club leadership, character building, caring, and inclusiveness. I'm happy to announce there are two people who showed extensive commitment throughout their service year. Please show me congratulating President Jaden Arenas and Treasurer Gabriela Flansbaugh. So the single, uh, the Silver Single Service Award recognizes clubs with 36 to 60 members. To earn this award, this club must be truly worthy of recognition with their service projects. It recognizes the club's effort in planning, organizing, introducing a service project that needs a specific need in the community. You guys openly embrace this and you were able to do something completely unique for your community by raising money for a scholarship in memory of a district teacher who lost her life to cancer. Thank you all for the hard work, and I'm ecstatic to present the Silver Service, the Silver Single Service Award to Keansburg Key Club. Right, is that one right over there?
Yeah.
Thank you, Ella. I have worked in this district for over 20 years, and I have to say that I have never been prouder of a group of hardworking, dedicated students that I'm, uh, that happen to be in this club. When the position of advisor was being offered, and I excitedly accepted it, I never thought that we would get the response that we did in regards to membership. Being such a small high school, I would have been happy with 10 or 15 students, but here we are with 40 members, which makes us the largest club in Keansburg history. One of the main concepts of Key Club is that it is a student-led organization. Jaden, Gabby, Gavin, and Rachel have been truly led by example, and have taken a large population of new freshman members under their wing, showing them what giving back to their community is all about. We have truly become the go-to club for all happenings in the district. I must receive 10 or more emails or texts a month from the school's administration, staff members, and community leaders asking me if my students would volunteer at their event. And within minutes of me posting the request on our club spreadsheet, all of the spots will be filled by the members of this amazing group of students. There is hardly a single event in this town that the students have not volunteered at, not because they are forced, but because they have a sense of pride in their town and what they are doing as representatives of the Kiwanis organization. When Jaden came to me last year and said that he wanted to find a way to honor our fallen teacher, we realized that there was no better way to show our respect for Misty than to form a scholarship in her name, because these kids are, were her entire life. But it wasn't enough for the kids to stop at just our school. They wanted to ensure that Boulder was involved as well. In partnership with the amazing staff and student council at the middle school, our club got 100% participation from both schools and raised over $1,500. If last year's service project wasn't enough, now these kids have taken on the responsibility of a community blood drive this coming weekend. I cannot say enough to all of the staff, administration, board members, and parents that are here tonight, how incredibly proud I am of these young adults, and they are truly why I became a teacher all those years ago. With that, we want to honor each member for their contribution to this incredible service project, because they have truly earned the respect of this entire community. I think I marked off everyone that's here. If I missed someone, I apologize. Divine Hair. Right, get a picture. Yeah, stop right there. Picture, Frank will take it. Gavin Flansbaugh. Destiny Humley. Calla Rivera. Anthony Rodriguez. Ariana Ousmane. Maggie El Soriano. Daniel Ludziki. We have a lot of flag football. Alright, we're catching up. Amaya Burke. Jaylee Sarange. Juliana Alonso. Kaylee Geiger. Leo Brulon. And last but not least, Alexis Arroyo. And let's not forget Danny Slover. Got everyone houring. Yes, we're good. Before we move on to the budget presentation, there was one more, um, just recognition that we wanted to do. We just wanted to congratulate our vice principal from Keansburg High School. Along with everything he does for our high school as administrator, he also coaches sports for us and fills in anywhere and everywhere that we ever ask him to. So Mr. Bird very quietly became Dr. Bird over the last month, so we just want to congratulate him and.
Okay, so, um, this is Lupe Case, our business administrator. He's gonna go over the 25, 26th budget. I'm gonna relocate my seat to the back, so I'm not anybody's side. Questions will be taken after the report. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Lindsay Case, and this is the head of the state. We're gonna go over the 25, 26th budget presentation. So, the first thing that we do, we have to develop a timeline. The timeline pretty much is a yearly event. So, in October, we start prepping for our budget review and information to administration. In November, we start prepping so that we can meet with the Department of Education to go over our mid-year review, to look, kinda give them a snapshot of where we are currently and where we need to go. In February, the state then goes ahead and they have their governor's address on the budget, typically the third week, the third Tuesday of the month in February. And then about 48 hours after that, we receive our budget allocation numbers from them. Uh, with that, at that time, we normally receive our preschool budget workbook. Uh, it is kind of a little bit of a challenge, because we have less than 20 days to complete a preschool workbook that then gets either provided to the state within one to two weeks' time. While we're trying to finalize everything, then the preschool is coming back and letting us know what they like, what they don't like. Those changes then change for us to help finalize our operations budget. In March, we always have to have our tentative budget, so that we can submit it to the state. The state then gets a 30-day turnaround time to provide it back to us. We're then, we're here tonight, so that we can work on, uh, going over a public hearing, and then finalize our final preparation. And then we open up the budget in July. So we'll always start with the tax impact, 'cause that's what everybody wants to know the first thing. Um, so, from last year to this year, the average home value goes up. It's because Monmouth County decided to participate in 2013 in a pilot program. So that means that instead of every 10 years assessing property value, Monmouth County goes ahead and they assess property value every single year. Our ratables come from the New Jersey Division of Community Affairs. And so that number at the bottom, where you see that $1 billion, that's telling us what the average assessment is for the whole town of Keensburg. And so those ratables are there for the whole entire Monmouth County, for every single town. But if you go back to prior budgets, you would see that that number was reduced in every year. It's increasing. And so with that, they tell us what the average home value is for Keensburg. So they're saying it increased from last year to this year on $50,000 for the average home value. What does that mean for school tax rates? Well, when you're looking at your budget, we know that when we're looking at our tax bill, it should be around 2%, because the state determined that that is what we're held to, a 2% budget cap. And for us, of that 2%, what school receives is the .8662. So we increase .0061% from last year's tax rates, meaning that we're gonna go up about $37.50 a month for the 25, 26th school year. And we'll dive a little deeper into that into the next slide. So why is that important? Because the slide on the left, where it is a pie chart, red is what our school share of your property taxes, orange is what goes back to the county, and then blue is what municipal has. So in most other districts across New Jersey, that red part of the pie is over 60%. So of your tax bill that the school receives, we're a little over 33%. So for us, for Keensburg, in the middle chart, that's telling you, when you're looking at your 2% for your, for your tax bill, how is that broken down? So for Keensburg, that's broken down, where municipal is receiving about 1.2. The school last year received .735, where that other slide before was the .86. And then municipal is receiving the .2. On average, for Monmouth County, for schools, it's .8. And for New Jersey, straight across, it's almost 1%. So for an average home value, moving across to the right side of the chart, it means that they're saying an average home in Keensburg, the school is receiving about $2,300. And then for Monmouth County, it's about $6,600. And for overall, for the state average, it's about $5,300. So just giving kind of a comparison. So how do we create the budget, and what factors come into play? Some of the factors that come into play are enrollment. Our enrollment has been pretty steady, so you might have heard about other districts and what they're experiencing, and they've lost enrollment, so that's where they've lost money through state aid. State aid is a weighted average. That weighted average comes from a calculation where we get the least amount for kindergarteners and the most amount for high schoolers. And then there's categories within that, that we get added on, to become a very convoluted formula that no matter if many, many districts sue the state or not, we still haven't received. So, with that, the other components that come in is special education requirements. And how do we look at that? We do a snapshot every year on October 15th to let us know where our district stands, right? How many enrollment we have, where those enrollment figures are. And then we need to then take those when we're creating the budget and kinda project where we see ourselves. But the state is providing us funding based off of our October 15th snapshot. We're also gonna, we also go ahead and put it into instructional supplies and materials, professional development, technology, facilities, athletics. The biggest piece of the pie is always gonna be contract requirements for salary and benefits, and then professional services like our attorney, our auditor, and our architect. So the biggest change from when we approved our tentative budget on March 19th, to then having to reapprove our budget on March, or April 15th, was that when we provided our initial tentative budget to the state, it was a sound budget. We had it. But then on March 31st, we got news that federal funding pulled our ARPESR for a little, close to 3.3 million. And so the state came back to us and said, okay, now you don't have a balanced budget. So when you do, you need to give it back to us and still follow all the election budgetary calendar requirements. So we needed to come up with a solution that didn't bust the bank on taxes, but also helped us. So we always go after as many grants as we possibly can. One of those grants was the STA Capital Emergent Project. This would be the third year that we're receiving it, and we were, we did receive the sum of $1 million. We were originally gonna use that for a kiss-and-go for the preschool. Uh, however, we needed to reallocate it to the loss in federal funding, because we have the high school HVAC project going on. Part of what happened with the HVAC funding formula is that there were supply chain issues. So we actually need to have a switchgear, and that switchgear controls all the electrical components of the HVAC that we spent all this time putting in, brand-new Arendale units into the classrooms. And we do not have, we finally received the switchgear. They told us it was gonna be a 50-week lead time. It wound up being 82 weeks. In order for us to install that switchgear, we actually have to take power down for the school, and we also have to work out those components with JCPL. JCPL does not prioritize schools over other places, so we needed to know that we had at least 13 to 15 working mandates where we wouldn't have power. That could not be done over spring break. If we ran into any problems or any issues, or JCPL felt like they couldn't get back to us to turn power on, we wouldn't have been able to open school. So that part of the project has to get done during this summer. But for federal funding, we were approved for late liquidation as of June 28th of 2024. They told us we had until December 26th to finish the project. We were slated to finish this project by mid-July. Once they pulled the funding, then we had to go back and look at what else could we do to supplement our costs. So we have to remove preschool courtesy busing. We went back through and really prioritized what supplies were needed versus wants. We are reducing to staff members. We had to reduce our summer school options. We are still having summer school, it's just not to the extent that we were originally going to have it. We also went back through, and about two years ago, we opened reserve accounts. Reserve accounts are very important. They're like savings accounts. So at the end of the year, when there's excess surplus, we would put them into capital reserve, which can be used for capital projects, or maintenance reserve. That can be used for regular wear and tear on certain parts of the building. And so what we're doing is we're taking money out of the capital reserve withdrawal, so that there's no tax impact. The other thing we needed to do was add additional tax increase of 1.47% or $3 on the average household. So originally, we talked about $37.50 a month. It was gonna be about $34 a month. So where does our money come from? Our money comes from local taxes of about 20% tuition in. We do have special ed programs, and we do have children from other districts that want to attend. And so those districts will pay us to receive the students in. Miscellaneous comes from things like facility rentals. Reserve interest is, if we know that we're receiving money and we haven't maybe paid payroll out or paid supplies, we are ensuring that we're putting it into a high-interest-bearing account to receive as much interest as we possibly can, until we need to use it for our operating costs. So, that is a very, the .5% is very conservative. We do typically receive more, but obviously, we don't ever wanna have to make up for a revenue source. And we'll get into why some of those things are a problem later on. So state aid, we were about, uh, 56% last year. We did receive a loss in funding, um, so we're 54.5. Extraordinary aid, we're at a little about .42%. And what does that mean? So extraordinary aid is for our, our most costly, highest-need learners. And so we have to either spend $40,000 or $55,000 out of pocket before the state reimburses us. We're eligible to apply for that in May, and so next month, we'll be going ahead and we'll be applying to the state. The state only has provided us money. The state only has provided us money for about 58% of the amount that they're supposed to provide back to the schools. They told us about two, three years ago that they were going to put $50 million in that bucket of money until they received it to 100%. The first year, they put 25 million extra. They have yet to add any more. So what winds up happening is 600 districts are going after the same pot of money with increased costs. So we do have students that go to added district placement. And so what winds up happening is that they'll give us money back for that, for the tuition part, but they're not going to pay us back for any of the transportation costs with that. And they're not ensuring that they're increasing that fund. So we're starting to receive letters from those added district placements that are saying, you know, please expect a rebuild of over 10% because they're not held to a 2% in cap like we are as a public school. And so that's really important because when they go through their audit process, then they have two to three years from the time that the state approves their audit to come back and rebuild us. Even if those students have graduated, we're still required to pay that bill. We will ensure that as we're going through the extraordinary process, if that student is still here, that we add it to the application to receive on money for rebills. But there is the possibility that the student has graduated, we're paying for that cost, and there's no eligibility for reimbursement on those dollars. For preschool aid, we did, they did reduce us by 15 students. So while we did receive an increase in funding, we reduced, we reduced money for our enrollment. For Medicaid reimbursement, this is a federal requirement that schools participate in. It's a, it's a statute. The reason why it's so important for us is that, and this kind of stems back to when we have revenue sources, they're telling us last year, we had to put in $190,000 into our budget. Yet mid-year this year, they're only paying us about $3.50 back for any time services are rendered to our students for that cost. And so we're not even going to come close to the 190 that was required. So we had to go through our budget and really figure out what could we do without so that we don't utilize money that we're never going to receive for revenue. And so for next year, they told us that our money for that dollar amount has to be $23,000. So before we even started the budget, we already had a decrease in revenues of $167,000. With that too, we talked about the reserve withdrawal. We're utilizing that money for capital reserve to finish the HVAC project. And we also took out a little bit of money for maintenance reserve withdrawal for our overall expenses to try to really keep what we're asking the taxpayer for back to the district at, at a minimum that we can. Fund balance is a requirement. So fund balance at a minimum has to be 2% or the state will not approve our budget. So right now, we are healthy. And we will continue to try to as we go through and use things because budget is a projection tool. Budget is an assessment. If we're not utilizing those at the end of the year, making sure that our fund balance is healthy for future budgets as well as putting that back into reserve accounts. So where will our money be spent as expenditures? Last year for classroom instruction, our, it was under 52. So we've actually increased classroom instruction to 53%. Administrative cost is 10. Operating and maintenance is 17. Equipment is under 1. Support services is about 16. Legal costs have been reduced, and extraordinary costs are about the same for extracurriculars. So when we look at our efficiency standards, where are we comparable to other like districts that are K to 12 with enrollment that is between 0 to 1,800 students? For our actual per pupil cost, we spent last year 19,000. The state average was 20. So we're ma, making sure to be fiscally sound. With our classroom instruction, it's 11,000. State average is 11.6. So when we talk about student administrative ratio, we are at 11.5, and the state average is 11.7. So we're ensuring our money goes to the classroom. And these are things that when we talked about going to the mid-year budget review with the county and with the state, we have to go over our projections on where we stand and where we're going, and they were happy to see this. It's always a hot topic for administrative costs. So in order for the state to approve our budget, we have to be under the regional maximum that's permitted, which is just shy of 2,700 per pupil. Our administrative costs are 1,900. And the state average for other like districts is about 21. And so where are we in comparative for student administrative ratio? We're at 117. Where other average like sizes throughout the state for enrollment for K to 12 are about 145. So we are low on the spectrum for administrative costs. So for facilities, we kind of just put some pictures together because when you look to how we've been able to do a lot of facility upgrades and what's going on, we apply for every possible grant imaginable. We've become very good at writing grants. So actually, over spring break, if you look to the left, these are two windows that are in the high school. Those were brand new, and those, those were paid for through the capital emergent grant that we talked about earlier. As you see for the, the sign for the scoreboard, we received a grant for 77,000 from the local recreation. So we were able to go ahead and install that. Over spring break, we actually restripped all of Boulder. So nice little parking spots, making sure safety is key. And some of the other buildings for the past, we've made sure to redo our boiler rooms, keeping them where they need to be. We'll kind of discuss utilities and how costs are really rising and that why making sure having a clean boiler room, more efficient requirements will help us really streamline and keep our reoccurring utility costs lower. And then last but not least, we had applied for many, many years for stabilization grants. And one of the years, we received a little over $2 million for furniture. So the seats we're sitting in as we're walking around the school, we're seeing a lot of new furniture throughout the classrooms because we received that grant for over $2 million. So those are just a few things for facilities. So the state talks a lot about adequacy and where we are. So during S2, one of the major things that they were talking about adequacy is are we paying? They will tell us how much money do you have to spend for a budget? So the state determined that our district should be sending $36 million to have an adequate budget. Right now, our adequate budget is about 30. So they're telling us we're about $5 million shy from where we should be. And, and how does that happen? They're looking at local fair share. So local fair share, when they look at it, it used to be a two-year look back for one year on the state funding formula. This year was the first year where they changed it, where they're doing a three-year average. So that even created more of a disparity from where we were. And they also looked at special ed categorical. It used to be where our snapshot was over 10 years. This time, it's where our snapshot is as of this year. And so that really helped us see an increase in our state aid funding formula. So then where does that put us? How are we trending? How are we forecasting for our future? We did strategic planning, right? We want to know where we've been, where we are, where we're going. We're always looking for alternate funding sources. And like we said, all those other pictures that you saw for facilities were all grant-driven. They're not, they were not part of the operational budget. And then we continue all the time to speak with our legislators. We've been talking to them more recently than not to try to recover some of that 3.3 million. And then we also ensure that we participate in as many shared services as possible. And we do things like for insurance, tonight you'll see there's for New Jersey School Insurance Group, we received a safety grant. So we're making sure to, to apply for that. They're, they are providing it to us, and then we will utilize that back for our Keensburg Police Department with our SLIOs. We utilize transportation jointures. What does that mean? It means if someone else is going to an added district placement and they're sending their students there and we're sending our students there, can we get a contract together to really drive those costs down and only pay for the portion that, of our students that are going to that school? So we're just trying to do anything we can to save operationally so that we can continue to put those monies back into the classroom. But we do have challenges. You know, the, the funding formula over the seven years did not cap how much we could lose or gain. Now with this change, we can only receive a 3% increase or decrease. Still, now we've had over a decade of a 2% budget cap, and it's been quite a challenge. If you look at the state's budget, they were about $34 billion 10 years ago. And this year, if it all goes through, it'll be about $64 billion. So not held to the same requirements that they're asking us to do. And we continue to get unfunded mandates all the time. We have all of our budget obligations, right? We talked about those contractually, our salaries, our benefits, our programs, we want to make sure that we're keeping. State healthcare has already let us know that while this year, we had a 15% increase, they project January of 2026 to have a 16% increase. And so that's, that's really impacting us. When they, when they made a change to healthcare, employees used to pay based off of salary and what the benefit costs were. Now the changes from 2018, a lot of it are based off of just salary. And so a lot of times now, the district is paying 100% of the increased costs versus it being shared. And so it's playing an impact in the operational budget itself. And so we'll see if there's anything that comes across for Chapter 44. We continue to provide all the information that the state asked for. If we were saving money, it would be a requirement that we would have to give that back to the taxpayer. However, since 2018, they have not seen where that's been a savings. For utilities. So utilities, every year typically in July, there's an auction. That auction for kilowatt last year was just shy of $29. When they actually did the utility auction, it went from $29 to $270. So we will see whether it's the school budget, home budget, business budget, it doesn't matter. In July, we will see an increase of anywhere, depending on where you are in the state, between 22 and 26%. So we had to ensure, if you look at our budget, it is up over that. We need to still ensure that we are heating and cooling all of our buildings. With that, we also had gas that went through the same, and that was an increase of 17% that we had to budget for. So many things in double digits when we're still held to a 2% cap. And so things that we've been trying to do is you'll see, we've been participating in grants for LED lighting throughout the district and ensuring that we're switching out ballast and working with electricians so that we can try to reduce our overall costs and bring our consumption down while still providing the same quality that we had. And then obviously, we still always need to meet the scope of our student needs. So we're always meeting together to go over, you know, what those are. Obviously, there's the budgetary component, and then there's the actual component. So things could change. People move in, people move out. We have to make sure that we can accommodate all of our students. And then tomorrow, if you want any of this information, it'll all be available on our website. I'm sure there are questions. What can I help with?
I have a question.
Sure.
So you mentioned that the borough is about 24% more than us. Is that common in most towns?
Yeah. How, how bad, much of the difference is generally in most towns?
It would normally be switched.
So we would normally, in most towns, the school would be about 20% taxing.
60.
60, yes. Because I see it's pretty close to 60% the borough, 30% us, and 10% the county.
Yeah, it would be flipped.
So it would usually be flipped in most towns. And so we're below average then for, per pupil? I'm sorry. I was trying to write down.
No, you're right.
I saw we're at 19,216 per pupil, and it was a little over 20K per pupil for the state average. That's fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Great to see it all broken down, except for your question.
Yeah, I just have two questions. First, with this budget being presented, there's no loss in academic, there's no loss in any type of extracurricular, none of that?
No.
No, absolutely no reduction. Well, it's great to hear. And the other one is, if you could explain the three-year plan, you mentioned that there has been some savings, and this has been going on for some time. If you could just explain that for us, so everybody understands kind of the scope of how much work you guys have been putting into this.
Okay. So again, when you end your budget, if you have $100 and your budget is $100 and you have $40 left, we've been taking that $40 and really been exercising opening up accounts like the capital reserve account so that when we know projects need to come down the pike, that we'll be able to reduce that without a tax impact. And then what we would do too is maintenance is for all your, like your cleaning, your repairs. And what happens is we're eligible to take money out of that at no tax impact as long as it doesn't go towards salaries. So they want to make sure it's not anything operational and that it's more one-time use. About two or three years ago, we didn't have those. So we ensured as we were getting COVID funding and working through strategically on where we needed to really forecast and set the district up, how are we in essence, right, going to have a savings plan that we can kind of lean on? And, and for things like, you know, what happened a month or two ago at Carissa, we had a flood, right? So we needed to ensure that we took care of the flood, we cleaned up the flood, but that we had a mechanism in order to do that without it taking away operationally from the district.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the presentation.
I have a question, Lindsay. When we talked about opportunities and maintaining on conversation with legislators, could you elaborate a little bit more and tell us who we've talked to and feedback that we're getting or lack of feedback that we're getting? And then the end today, where is Washington involved with this? You know, any community?
Even receive any feedback from?
No federal response. We do at the state level, we have gotten a lot of responses. Vino, Paul, Ash, Cal, outside that. They've all talked to us, but pretty much just like.
Listening to it.
Yeah, Vino. Yeah. They're pretty much listening to us, but they're not.
But is anyone going to come here? I have to see for themselves. We have to see our community. Only place in Monmouth County. It's an election year. We have to reach out to people. We know when we had our tentative meeting, we were talking about, you know, we had a holiday break, right? Everybody had spring break or whatever. I know that we reached out to some people and they went on family vacations, which is okay. But where are we now coming forward?
So now that we're coming back, they're in, but so Vino Paul is the chair of the Education Committee, so they've really started the budget process. So they're there. We're going to try to catch their ear. I think it's May 21st again at the Garden State Coalition meeting where they're kind of discussing, you know, the future and where the budget's going. We will continue to reach out to them personally to see, you know, when they can come and visit. We continue to talk to the county to make sure that they understand where we are. And we've also been talking to the other 19 districts to try to have, you know, kind of help with numbers together. Because we're not the only state that this impacted. This impacted all 50. So kind of how can we all come together to explain that? Like this was for us, a supply chain issue. We followed all the rules and the requirements that they had along the way. We also, you know, a lot of our work gets done over summer. So we had already been having talks with the grants office, asking them, can you please devise a mechanism so that we can draw down on this money? For federal grants, typically what happens is we complete a reconciliation for the month. We go into their system, we tell them what we paid for, and then they reimburse us within that month. So it's a very fluid system. With these particular grants and getting the late liquidation, it was not fluid. We were lucky to be approved for the Carissa 2, so the SR2 money, because that was also wrapped into the HVAC project. And they really wanted a certificate of completion. We were eligible because we had it also utilizing the SR3 money, so the ARP-ESR funds, where they gave us back the money that we had put out for the Carissa 2. But they refused to give us a mechanism to draw down, even though we had spent over $2 million last summer out of the $3 million. And so they, they've been well aware of all along the way, like how can we get help? You need to assist us. Like we need a way to draw down this money. This is not how federal grants typically operate. How can you assist?
So we got the letter from Linda McLeary. And you go look on her website in Washington DC. Says that she's looking at everything case by case, whatever that means in her real world, okay? But also it said, if you want to request an appointment or whatever, there's a five-week lead time. That's another tool, I think we should just fill it out. That's another tool, like, if we should just fill it out, it's that we have that trail, right? Right there on her website, saying either they're going to hurt herself or one of her team members will reach out to us.
So we'll put in a second request by the end of the week.
Do I respond?
No, not yet.
So another question, so I know Senator Bill Powell, I've spoken a lot about him, but he represents, I know he's the head to chair of the education committee, he's a great friend of mine, but he represents legislative district, yeah, we live in legislative district thirteen. Has Senator Declan O'Scamlin?
He did answer.
He hasn't answered?
He did answer.
Is he advocating for us or?
He's so sorry for our situation.
That's good to hear, because I know we hear a lot about Senator Gopal, but I don't want people to be confused and think that he has to advocate for a town within his own legislative district. We need our state senator, Senator O'Scamlin to advocate for us.
So we've also been working with Gopal because they have the funding formula working with records, and they've been reviewing it monthly, so we wanted to ensure that Gopal.
I'm sure Senator McKeen, he's been a friend of ours, and in education, Jerry's certainly something great, but I just wanted to make sure our representative.
And we've also been talking to them about timelines, right? Like timelines used to be, we would receive our CDA members at the end of January. Now we're receiving them pretty much close to the beginning of March. Yet we're required to provide a tentative budget to the county pretty much no later than the twentieth. And that's including weekends, right? So it's very challenging that we're continually making multiple budgets without really getting to have, we're having nitty-gritty conversations, right? But not really being able to get down to the meat and potatoes of it until, you know, ten days before it's due.
Haven't had a year when we had positive results from CDA formulas coming out.
How do we get a curveball every year?
So every year, we have these four budgets, we have the worst-case scenario, we have this stops, we have this is a little bit better, and we have we can function. And those are the only four budgets that we've created every year. Every year we wound up with we can function. We're still fine, like, we're good. But every year I say this, this is the last possible year that we can lose anything else and still function as we are. And I'm not kidding this time when I say it truly is, but we have nothing else to.
And we're good with the one point four four seven percent increase we did, under the two percent gap.
But this is it, like, this is the last year when we're not going to be severely impacted.
So you're saying we can afford another curveball?
No, no, we don't have, we don't have it operationally. And, you know, again, we don't know where the option's going to be for utilities, but then they've already told us that benefits are going to be double digits.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like.
Right, and so I would assume utilities for the next three or five years are going to increase.
I mean, there is a utility board in the state. Are we in contact with that?
We are, we are. We also actually also had, when we're meeting countywide as business administrators, we're bringing out representation that are also going on our behalf to speak at those auctions. A part of the issue in New Jersey is they thought that solar would pick up faster and also have a greater return. So they closed down two of the power plants that were sourcing New Jersey. And now they have to reopen the plant. It's very easy to close a plant, and it's not easy.
To the utility board, I mean, what is that they made a public, and that's not that, not many people know we have a utility board, but that they made a public stance about.
They did last July.
Their increase.
But the problem is, right?
But I'm talking about the new increases, I'm talking about this year, not this last July, you know?
Well, you don't, what happens is, right, it happened last July, but you don't see it until twelve months down the road. So I think the issue is not everybody has been impacted by yet to understand the gravity of the situation.
And I'm suing utility boards against these huge increases?
They don't want to do it, but they feel like they have no other option, that it's an auction, and that that's what those team back after wants to run.
Give me a big question. Last, two weeks ago, we talked about the Q and A.
Can you pick up, sir, if you can hear you?
Yes, sir. Two weeks ago, there was a meeting, and we talked about the reference of seven million dollars that Trenton wants to take from the taxpayers instead of getting it from Trenton, get it from the taxpayers. Can you elaborate on that?
Sure. So one of the new programs that the state decided to do this year was called the Tax Incentive Plan. Three hundred out of six hundred districts qualified for the Tax Incentive Plan, and the two things that you had to be ordered to qualify is under adequacy and under your local fair share, which for us two, they deem us to be appropriate. The issue is, in order for us to participate, it was for every million dollars, the state would give us an additional fifty thousand or five cents.
Taxes that we raised high.
So, yeah, so five cents on every dollar in taxes we raised. And in order for us to even go ahead and utilize, and you saw it in the chart, that five point eight million dollars, we would have had to also exhaust all of our banked cap, all of our healthcare waiver, all and, well, those are the two that we have. So what happens every year when you're creating your budget? You can go up to two percent and use allowable uses. There are four allowable uses for the state of New Jersey. One is enrollment, we don't qualify, ours is staying steady. The second one is healthcare, which we know we're hitting double digits, so we do qualify, and that's where a lot of our banked cap. Banked cap is when you had that money and it's put into a pot, but you haven't had to utilize it, and you're able for the state to utilize that over the next three years. We had built up as of last year, a banked cap of about one point eight million dollars. And then the other two are, which were K to twelve, so there isn't a send-to relationship, that's typically for a high school where K to E. And then the last one is a shift to, so there was pension reform about ten years ago, and there are some districts that have not paid the state back for their portion. We are not one of them, so again, not eligible for that. But in order for us to use this tax incentive plan, we would have had to exhaust all one point eight million in banked cap plus an additional four hundred eighty-nine thousand that we had accumulated this year due to healthcare cost rises. And we would have been way higher in double digits for taxpayers, just to receive five cents for every dollar we increase taxes. We know we provided a sound budget, so we didn't feel that that was a risk worth taking. Thank you.
I've got a question. Concerns about curveballs ahead and things like that. Our capacity, our attendance is about the same, we stay, we stay pretty steady.
So we're about sixty percent capacity throughout the buildings?
So we still have space to grow, right?
We do.
And then part of our CDA is actually based upon attendance. If we had more students, we would get the allowance each year for each one of those students. I know it's weighted, so you have more for high school students than we do for elementary schools.
So say on average, six sixteen thousand?
So if we had, say, ten more students, we would basically be getting another hundred sixty thousand dollars.
Correct.
Or a full salary, but teacher plus benefits is probably somewhere in that range. And so we have the capacity, if the numbers that we're at, I don't know about the schools that we flooded, but we have a lot of construction and other projects that are going on at the site going on in town. If we have more students coming from those buildings, coming from that construction, coming from those events, one, we have the capacity to serve those students, two, we'd have more money to actually have teachers to service the students in the buildings. And then I assume our overhead, things like the heating bills that we're talking about, the lighting doesn't get more expensive because more students are in the building, heat doesn't get more expensive for students in the building. So we basically keep those flat costs there, and we have more CDA to reduce that nineteen thousand. Hopefully we're going to start nineteen per school down a little bit, right?
Correct.
So we want to roll, right?
Anything else?
I think you saw that the cost per pupil is twenty thousand something, right?
Nineteen.
That's the state average, ours is nineteen.
Nineteen, about that. Well, if you get sixteen.
It's all weighted, so what we're saying is average, but say for a kindergartner, you might receive. I'm thinking all these up city, yeah.
Those averages like nineteen.
Which is why you see.
Do we really cover the cost of nineteen? Because I do agree with what you said, that the question came to me a second ago, cost, weighted cost of nineteen, we don't really get much extra, right?
So if you think about it this way, it'll actually help us because we have our operational reoccurring costs. So the more students we're servicing, our our operational costs are going up, but then they would go down because we're receiving CDA, so that would help our revenue source increase.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any comments or questions? Agenda items only. Please come up, say your name and address. See you in a conference or question, or close that motion. There's no next session. I need a pool of the minutes for March eighteenth at a March twelfth meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Your center?
I'll say.
Roll call.
Mrs. Clayton? Mrs. Frizell? Mrs. Callahan Moran? Mr. Minkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes, on the twelfth, I understand, I'm here.
Thank you. Ms. Ferrara? Ms. Ryan?
Superintendent of Schools recommends positive action on the following items. Under personnel, number one, resignation, two, thirty-day notice of termination, three, professional employment, four, reemployment of personnel, that's professional and paraprofessionals. Five, no step increase for twenty-five, twenty-six because of days worked. Six, transfer professional and non-professional staff. Seven, supervisor athletics, high school. Eight, leave of absence, medical. Nine, volunteer position. Ten, prepay evening registration staff. And that's it under personnel.
I need a motion first.
I'll make the motion.
Any questions? Gopal?
Mrs. Clayton? Mrs. Frizell? Mrs. Callahan Moran? Mr. Minkowski?
Yes, however, on four, I abstain on page six to the thirteenth.
Fifteen, and you. Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Ms. Ferrara?
Yes, but I've stayed on page five, second name down, and number seven on there.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Superintendent of Schools recommends positive action on the following items. Under general, number eleven, district HIV report, twelve, disposal of unusable outdated urban furniture and equipment, thirteen, acceptance of donations, fourteen, in-class state trips. Oh, I'm sorry, in-state, in-state fast trips.
Do I get a motion? I need a second.
You got it, man.
Any questions? I have one, please. On number thirteen, can we please make sure the senator will get your letter, okay?
Roll call, Mrs. Clayton? Mrs. Frizell? Mrs. Callahan Moran? Mr. Minkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Ms. Ferrara? Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
School District Administrator Board Secretary report. Board Secretary's monthly certification certifies that hill item, line item has been over expended, and that sufficient funds are available to meet the district's financial obligations for the remainder of the fiscal year. Payroll certifications for March fourteenth and March twenty-eighth. Superintendent of Schools recommends positive action on the following items. One, receipt and acceptance of March Board Secretary's report. Two, approve appropriation transfers. Three, get through the bills list. Four, approve adopted twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Five, approve acceptance of four-year twenty-twenty-five local recreation improvement grant. Six, approve cancellation of stale data checks. Seven, war contract for professional services for site assessment. Eight, approve twenty-five, twenty-six New Jersey Schools Insurance Group safety grant. Nine, renewal of the food service management company list.
I have a motion, please.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Any discussions?
I have a question. For number five, I thought the borough is building a pickleball court. What? What's the?
This is a grant. This is for the school, it's used for gym class. You know the old parking lot is in the year?
Yes, where the tax courts, where that became a parking lot?
Yes, so there's, we received a grant to, we get a function.
Okay. Yeah, it's, I mean, for a lot of them, and I saw this in years of, like, vacation.
Roll call, please.
I have a question.
I also have a question. Could you just explain it a second?
So we were, when we were opening this room, pissed about the parking lot, the Chinger parking lot for K-Tech, we need a site assessment for that to see if there's any weapons or any restrictions building on that property. So in the event that we still go through the fair, which we hold to, we're going to have that site set for that reason.
So that's where the old preschool was.
Trailers.
And the reason we need their help with that is we might also have to include this apartment of environmental protection, and that's a very challenging process, so we need to ensure that our architecture is part of it so that we have all the environmental sound, so we can move forward.
I was going to just ask that if there's a timeline involved with this.
We want now, and so we know the scope of the work.
And if there's any chance we're going to get that money back too.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Actually, as I have a, did we put out, we didn't put out for food service manager, did we?
Every five years. Tomorrow will be in our fifth year.
Next year, sir.
Next year's last year.
So that means we're getting an additional two little kids?
One.
One year? Is it a little bit of a bonus?
We have to look at insurance things, I think that.
So it's going to be a pickleball capital.
Okay, any other questions, please? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Clayton? Mrs. Frizell? Mrs. Callahan Moran? Mr. Minkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Ms. Ferrara?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan? Mrs. Administrator, Board Secretary at Denver, Superintendent of Schools recommends positive action on the following item. Approve the employment negotiation agreement for twenty-four, twenty-five, negotiated agreement, sorry, for twenty-four, twenty-five.
I need a motion, please. Need a second? Any questions? Some more questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Clayton? Mrs. Frizell? Mrs. Callahan Moran? Mr. Minkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
No.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Ms. Ferrara? Ms. Ryan?
Well, now open a meeting for public comments or questions related to, any concerns or questions, please come up, state your name.
Handoff, um, hard side piece. I just want to, first, I just want to say that I truly believe that Kingsburg District has really great teachers, and sometimes it may come off differently, at least for me. Many teachers have great, have been regular models for my kids, encouraging them, kind and caring. And if I can name them off personally right now, I would, however they do know who they are and how thankful I am for them. I have a couple of questions and a couple of things to say. We talked about numbers, which is great, and everything that everybody's doing. As far as like academics, quite a few people have been trying to find like academic stuff. So I know a couple of times people have come to the board, like using Zillow or things like that, and then us being told that's not accurate. We went on the website, and it brings you to two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, when you try to get, I mean. I mean, if you go on right now, if you go on from your phone, I have it screen recorded to show you, you know, you have to...
Are you talking about the real estate companies like school?
Can you just finish, please? Thank you.
So, yes, that is one of the things I'm talking about, but I was told that's not inaccurate, you know?
Yeah, I wanna know where you're to be, like, on the website.
So you can go on right now, you go on the website or you type in like the Department of Education and you hit Kingsburg, it brings us to our website. And it's like a dead, dead age and then when you copy that and you put it in, it brings you to two thousand seventeen.
That's our old website. Did you try going like through our, like, go to kingsburg.helsetnj? Okay, I'll look because a lot of times if you use Google search, it takes you to our old stuff and if the DOE has the incorrect, I'll look into that too because we updated our website. So a lot of times, like, we Google searched something the other day and it took us and I was like, what is this? This doesn't even make sense. It was our old website.
So I'll look though.
We can just like, all the stuff that we were looking for, all the websites were kinda consistent with numbers and stuff, but if we can't accurately go by those, you know, like if we come to you and you say that's not accurate and we can't find it on the school, we just need, like, graduation rates and like, and one thing, it says the science rate is at six percent and if you look at something else, like math, you're at eleven percent or three hundred and fifty, school, three hundred and fifty-four out of four hundred and six schools. So like, when you do your own research and you're looking up different websites like publicschoolsreview.com, niche, those types of things, they all have the same stuff across the board. So if those aren't accurate, then can you just provide us with...
I'm not saying that what you're seeing is accurate, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but the example of science, that's the state average also. You know, so science is a bad example, but one hundred percent math, we are below state average. One hundred percent we are. And that's why that's where we're putting funding into that area, so we're gonna come back.
Then it does say, like, our students are way below grade level. Like, everything that we research, so if I don't come here and say, this is what it is, this is what we're finding on the internet, I want you to...
The other place you can look, every October, we do the state of schools address and that's on the website and then there it gives like all the averages and things like that.
But our concern is like, it is low and our kids aren't on grade level and all the stuff that you guys say when you're there is, is great, it all sounds great, but when you look at the numbers and where our kids are, it's not great. It's really not.
The other thing that I would like to do, and I mean, that's a lot of state of schools, is that we do our own separate, that is, students who have been here for five years or more and it's dressed a little different. So our population is so transient, we get a kid on Tuesday and we're giving them the state test on Thursday. We did not teach that kid. That kid might've been at ten other schools before they came here. So that's a huge issue for us, is the transitivity. And obviously, it's not an issue that we could ever change and it's not something that we're angry about, but it is a huge issue for us. When we run reports that show students that we have had for at least five consecutive years, the difference in their scores is exponentially better. We have so much transitivity that it's very difficult for us to take ownership of a lot of these students. Like, I walk into a high school, I've been here twenty-five years. I walk into a high school, I don't know if it's a percent of the kids at best.
Is there any way that you are able to give a sample of...
Yes, we could definitely do it.
Or like, you don't have to say a juxtaposition, you can give a little bit more accuracy.
Yes, absolutely.
The numbers that we're getting are bad, it's like that. Like I said, the numbers, budget wise, sound perfect, but the grades and stuff that our kids are getting are not where they're supposed to be. And you can see that in the research that you can do yourself. So again, I, I, like, leave my emotion, I will be the first to say that. I am very passionate about kids, my own kids, that I'll do whatever I have to do for my kids. I don't care if they're thirty or fifteen, I'm going to do what I have to do for my kids. And like I said, I do appreciate many kids, Carrie's thirty years old, to Aiden who's fifteen. So there are people who have done great by my kids and I will never take that away from the district or even some of the parent, people administrating who are sitting here right now. I also have to say, though, that we do in fact have teachers that have questionable agendas and I'm just gonna give you a few examples and I would be more than happy to sit down and go through this stuff that I'm telling you right now. I don't come, if it's a fact, if I'm coming to you with it and I think you know me by now, it's that. So we have teachers talking about other students, to other students. It causes animosity and pride between the kids and it's just unprofessional. Like, you should not, being a teacher, talk about students, about other students than those students get together and compare notes, shouldn't be happening. Teachers openly talking about specific students in their classroom, that, that is going, like, openly. With kids not in there, they're openly talking to the classroom about students, shouldn't be happening. Five oh four plans in the IEP, they're not being followed as they should be. Openly, in front of the class, a teacher calling out the student suffering from mental health issues, also with a five oh four at the IEP, who needed a little extra support, was questioned why they were making extra work for the teachers. In front, said it to the student, in a whole classroom, in front of everybody. Again, I wear my heart, I come, I really am, like, I take a different look at things, like situations happen in my life and I take it a different way, uh, you know, I don't want to the school, I'm not, it's just, it just shouldn't be happening. So that's, don't tell a kid who is mentally unstable that you're causing to do more work. And when the student replies, that's what you're getting paid for, the teacher replies back, no, we don't. Students support resources, breaking confidentiality, openly talking about things that was set in confidence by students to other staff members. So you have students who are going to talk to their support system as supposed to be confident. Confidentiality, that's supposed to be happening and it's not, it's being overlooked. Kids can't safely go talk to the people who they're supposed to, it's not right. And teachers are promoting conflict with the students over and over. So for instance, I'm gonna tell you, two friends, two really good friends, who have a conversation and there's a teacher that a student has conflict with. The teacher went over to both the students and said, you know, if you go like this to him, he's gonna flinch. Why? Why? There's many more things that I could say, but I think you get the point of we're involved with this.
You mind if I go in?
Yes, that's completely fine. And since the last board meeting, members have spoken out in public about how sorry they are for voting no and all that stuff and I get it, but you vote it and then you're in public saying, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't want to, I didn't... If you don't want to, don't. And if you vote by what you, you're standing, stand by it, don't go in public and say, I'm sorry or I shouldn't have or is your sign of the mix, say no. Either you vote yes or you vote no and you stick to it and you don't go to the public and conflict what you vote. All right. Did I take, what, from the special meeting, did I take it, things personally, one hundred percent? Do I think things were done a little bit addictively? Yes. The events that took place, so after the meeting, there was a separate meeting at a restaurant, a public restaurant, people can go eat wherever they want, do whatever they want, enjoy themselves, that's completely fine. But when you leave a board meeting and you go to a public restaurant and you are talking about board things at a restaurant and then when you get caught, you go to the restaurant and you try to have one of the, your own Titan alumni's by you because you were in a public place talking about board meetings, board things that we're not supposed to know about because it's the whole ethic thing, you're not allowed to know about it. But as we talked about in the restaurant, about people, about staff, about fellow board members and a person sitting at the table has nothing to do with the board, she shouldn't know anything that's going on. Never mind sitting there listening to what's going on. And I, this, for me, is, I just want to end with my sincere heartfelt thankfulness. It's one of the district's administrators who ultimately stopped suicide from happening and I'll never be able to describe with words how grateful I am, but just know that one of your administrators identified someone who had a plan for suicide and stopped it. And that has to go, can't go on like this because it would've ended in a bad way. And I do appreciate that and I just want you to know that.
Do you mind sharing, did he, I, I, first I'm here.
The administrator who identified the problem, Mr.... Thank you.
Any other questions, please come up state your name. See you know, other questions, we're closed that portion. Councilman, the new boards, old boards, start better, or start just the kitchen, start this night.
Just wanna thank everybody for coming, asking questions, you know, seeing how the budget works, it's great to see. Please, you know, it'll be posted, the budget itself, the presentation, this is, everything's reported, we shared, people have an understanding. I've seen comments that say we spent over thirty thousand dollars for a student who just learned tonight. That's hundreds to twenty thousand, the state average. Every year, like we spoke about, we get curveball. We're doing the best we can, I think our team does a great job, I think the board does a great job trying to keep everything together, our business, our superintendent, I think, you know, this one was a brutal last minute curveball. I think we just all did a great job and thanks, public for coming out. We're seeing more and more people at every meeting, please continue to do so, thank you.
Ms. Frizell. Mrs. Ryan.
I wanna send out congratulations to the Key Club as well. I think it's fantastic that these young people are actually going out of their way to get involved without being pushed to do it. Again, I'm learning new things every day with the budget and all of that. I have to thank everybody over there for explaining little things to me and I, I'm still working on all of that. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Bird, Dr. Bird. That's about it.
Ms. Ferrara.
I just wanted to congratulate Dr. Bird and the Key Club. So the Key Club is running this blood drive. I've never given blood, although I've given blood enough.
I haven't, I'm a woman, I guess.
Pregnant a lot of times, but this time will be my first. I'm a nervous wreck, but I was like, you know, it's very good cause I love what they're doing. Congratulations to Dr. Bird and what we heard about Mr. Reed, that was just, it shows the staff that we have.
Thanks, Mr. President. I wanted to touch on a couple of quick little pieces. First of all, congratulations to the Key Club, Martin, I know you have your heart to that, so definitely shows. So congratulations to all of you, I guess it's a lot of work, I'm sure. Dr. Bird, congratulations. Another point I wanted to mention about budget, the New Jersey School Board Association sends all of us emails regularly, different updates and legislation. And one just came up that I wanted to just touch on, that the NJ DOE Commissioner had had a meeting back in April twenty-first and I'm sure everybody here in the public could also go find this, but there was an analysis done by the Office of the Legislative Services on the New Jersey Department of Education budget. And if anybody has any questions, not just the launch of our budget, budget presentation, but also with the state as well. Just that way you can get a full scope of all knowledge. The other thing I wanted to mention that some from the public obviously mentioned before was, and Ms. O'Hare also mentioned, was the state of the schools in October and that, I think, gives a realistic viewpoint of what our school has been doing. And I know Dr. Pergam, Christine, Pramika has also been really diligent and uplifting with a lot of their new curriculum. I know, I remember, now you could correct me, it was a twenty-five percent increase in the algebra this year or something along those lines? Yes, okay, so I'm glad, see, that there's an uplift in that as well. But I think that state of the school really does address our, here in our district, not just the state generalization of what's on the website. And with that, that is all, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sharon.
Just wanna say congratulations to Dr. Bird, thank you for your hard work and dedication to our team and we really appreciate you. Martin, being an alumni of Kingsburg, we're very proud of you and thank you for what you do for humanity. And I wanna thank our administrative team and Lindsay, Mr. Seedy, everybody for the budget. You know, it's hard to balance your budget at home, to do something like this takes a lot of work and a lot of research. Thanks to our superintendent, you know, they're on, you know, people see that, you know what? We watch our pennies, we really do. We deserve more, but we work with what we have and I think we're pretty good to our kids. All we need is for our kids to come to school and don't be late and it'll be wonderful, thanks, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Clayton.
Happy May Day, which will be soon.
And I wanna know, does this doctor cost us any money?
Unfortunately, we do not pay for your doctor.
Congratulations. I got this rash. I'm all about the money.
Pleasure being here.
Just wanna thank the administration, you know, the whole administration and office for all their work on the, on the budget. It's quite a bit, just that, and Mr. Kitchen, you know, it is, thank you, mentioned this in the last meeting, it's frustrating for us with the misinformation that comes up. This information is up here today, you saw the salaries of every single teacher. So when people say, where does the money go, and you see a pie chart that says that the money goes for the salary in classrooms, you can see it dollar for dollar, which every single teacher has paid, it's unfortunate, part of being a government employee is that your numbers are all out there. We have low administrative costs, we have, you know, all these teachers that are there. So again, information is there, all of our meetings are posted, all of our minutes and everything is posted on the site. Do you wanna thank the Key Club for all their hard work? Tremendous to see, especially with one of the largest clubs that's here, is all owned here. Again, I can say that at other events, it has nothing to do with the Key Club, they're the ones helping to set up those events over at the elementary school and some of the other events, it's great to see them around the community. And I know St. Patrick's Day Parade was a little while ago, but along that same line, we, for the last several years, I haven't seen a lot of participation from the schools. This year, not only the Key Club coming out and being a large section of that, but that's what made me think about it. Multicultural Club was there, the Early Learning Center is always there, but we just had more participation again. Our club was there, and to see the schools and students involved in, and I'm proud of being, you know, Titan, so thank you.
Well, I'll piggyback on that. If the Key Club, if Martin didn't invite you, we invite the Key Club and everybody else who participated in the St. Patrick's Day Parade, the Kingsburg Parade Committee will have a Memorial Day Parade at five eighteen twenty-five. The details are on the webpage. Again, Key Club's, see Mr. Martin Sluzak over there, he'll give you his autograph too. From what I understand, the town show is amazing. Unfortunately, I'm in class and I missed it, but my class is over officially today, so it was incredible. Our kids are already gifted and talented, I wish I could've been there. Doctor, congratulations. Again, I got this rash, or can you help me with my golf swing? I'll come back. Spring sports, again, you're right, I was able, I was at opening day for baseball in Hasray Park. The wind coming off the water was, yes, you had a ski jacket on tonight. It was cool. So again, we'll finish out the year in our sports and everything. Thank you for the budget team, again, it's not easy, raising people's taxes and for getting thrown a curveball, but again, we do and again, I'm very proud of being a part of this team. I participated in the drug, the blood drive this Saturday. The third from nine to one. Is Ms. Luke still here? I don't know my time.
Gee, the night, one thirty, right?
No, I don't know my time, I signed up, I, my bill canceled. You can take it now, I'll find it, hopefully I'll get a reminder. But with that said, again, thank you everyone for coming out. Again, I'd like to have more meetings where we get out the worst doctors and our Key Club members. So every meeting, I guess I talk about money. so after meeting, we'll, we'll start talking about money. So, again, with that, yes, no, Mrs. Rizelle, go ahead.
Is, um, and I'm not sure if you need to question for the venue. Can I respond to one of the members in the audience?
All right, can you respond to?
To the audience?
I, I think that, I think, if you keep it general, I think it got too specific, uh, once the superintendent said the day we're gonna be in communication, that, kind of it, but if you wanna do it in general, don't get into any of the specifics.
Okay.
If you wanna apply, okay, otherwise, we shouldn't. I got a little too specific.
Okay, with that, any other things? I intend a motion, if you just want to celebrate this, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'll celebrate it. I'll take the motion.
Here we go. Ice cream? So, no ice cream, dessert, sir?
No, exactly.
All kinds, make a, uh, make a motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
First, second. All right, make favor.
First, sorry.
No, I just do a motion. All favor. We'll see you back here.